...of our system, be with us through this meeting, provide us guidance and wisdom. We thank you for the many blessings that we all enjoy. Be with those that serve and protect us here and around the world tonight. In your holy name we pray, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated and we'll get a microphone and get some introductions. If you could give us your name, the school you're from, and what grade you're in, please.
Chanel Adams, I'm in fifth grade.
My name is Jada Dyson, I'm also in fifth grade.
My name is Amaria Rawlison, I am also in fifth grade.
My name is Zaya Davis, and I'm also in fifth grade.
And they're from Snipes Academy of Arts and Design. Instructor is Krista Fason, is that right Krista? Glad you're here with us tonight. And the principal Cindy Toward, there Cindy back there. Good to have you all with us tonight. We appreciate you all coming and singing for us tonight. Thank you very much. Ms. Adams, would you call the roll, please? Here.
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 Thank you. Item two is approval of the agenda. Any additions, deletions?
None.
Move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
They are approved, thank you. Item three is approval of the minutes. Item A are special meeting minutes from June the 29th, 2016.
Move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They're approved. Item B, special meeting minutes from June the 30th, 2016.
Move for approval.
Second.
Questions, comments? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? They're approved. Item four, recognition of achievement.
There is none listed, but we can't let this meeting go by without a special recognition, so I'll turn this over to Ms. Felita Quattlebaum.
Thank you, Dr. Markley. Good afternoon, everyone. So like Dr. Markley said, we do have one very special recognition for tonight because our own Assistant Superintendent of Operations is leaving us for retirement on September 1st, and that is none other than Mr. Bill Hans, and tonight is his final board meeting. So to Bill, I bet you thought we were going to let you slide out of here without embarrassing you, didn't you? But no way. We had to talk about you just a little bit. We have to recognize Mr. Hans, or as Dr. Holliday likes to call him, Colonel. So, Mr. Hans, we want to recognize you for your leadership and your dedication to this district. And I'm getting paid by the adjective, so... We think that you are one of the most compassionate, smart, kind, generous, and thoughtful people that we've ever met. You're one of a kind. You are most certainly irreplaceable. How can you do this to us? We're going to miss you and all the fun that we've had with you over these years. And so if you would please come forward, we'd like to recognize you for 21 years of outstanding, excellent service to New Hanover County Schools.
What are we going to do without you?
Now Bill, we're going to do a more, obviously, a more formal one later, but like I said, we couldn't let this one pass.
Oh, we want to kind of rush him a little bit, or?
The mic is, the floor is yours, Chairman.
Well, I really didn't prepare any comments. Y'all don't have to. I might get carried away. And we're not talking about a real Marine here, I'm an old Navy guy, so you know, I'm just saying he was in the Department of the Navy. And you told me one time, what department was that? When I, when I bugged you that time, when I sent you that email, and I said, remember, they, they make a big deal, the men's department, and I said, oh, he really got it. I said, I'm not going to get it again, because he really got me. They make a big deal out of their birthdays, the Marine Corps does, Navy, and, but I sent Bill an email one time, and he was like, you know, you realize it is Department of the Navy. And boy, did I open myself up. He said, you're right, Ms. Hayes, the men's department. But I was on the board when his name was mentioned 21 years ago. I remember the discussion taking place at Camp in Charlotte, correct? I remember that. And Ms. Cavanagh, Mr. Higgins, we were the three that were here at the time. And they said a lot of good things about you, and it certainly has all proved to be correct. But a couple of things that brought back memories to me when I looked up here, we have a lot in common. Of course, I'm, I'm much older than you are. I know Bill, one time he flew, when he was in the Marine Corps, pilot, I flew as an air crewman. The plane he flew went a little faster than ours. Yours was what, ASIX? ASIX, what, Intruders?
Yes.
Intruder. I was in an old P-2V, which was an anti-submarine squadron.
You were a passenger, he was the pilot.
I know. Just Cavanagh, we rushed him, not me. Your, your, your speed was what? Top speed, you know, 600 feet. 600 feet. We were lucky in a dive, we had 200. But, Woodby Island, correct?
Yes.
I was stationed at Woodby Island, Washington State, did a lot of fishing and different stuff up there. So when I heard all this later about Bill, I said, you know, he's, he's got to be a good guy. It says to that Marine Corps thing, and I'm overlooked that, at least it was the Department of the Navy. But I really, and I'm sure other board members have some things that I could say, but I didn't prepare anything. But we're going to sort of miss you, but you certainly deserve it. Done a great job here in every respect. And I appreciate your service here, but then also your service prior to coming here. We appreciate it. Ms. Cavanagh?
Like I said, I really don't know what we're going to do without you, because you have been instrumental in so many things. And I was just wondering, you know, in 2020 we'll be redistricting again, and I wanted to know if you would volunteer for the process. I know how much you enjoy it.
I've already talked to him about consulting.
No, I'm very serious. You have run that department. I always had faith in you. I didn't have to worry about anything. If there was a problem, you took care of it. A lot of times, it never got to the board because it was already taken care of. I have never written you an email asking for something that you did not quickly respond. You have been a joy to work with, and I truly will miss you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that greatly.
And I want to add too, yes, he answers our emails very quickly, but he's very prompt and very clear. When parents have questions, or employees have questions, he's very good about responding. But I want to tell you, we had a celebration, and that shows this picture over here with that arrow going down, in his uniform. That was his uniform years and years ago. And it was not popping at the seams when he put it back on for the occasion. That is a wonderful achievement, because he is a former Marine.
Yeah, but if you liked it, it was worth a penny of dollars.
You're never a former Marine. Once you're a Marine, you're always a Marine.
Because I was at one time connected to this one. So we're very proud of, we're going to miss you, but yes, we'll see you, we'll leave you.
From afar.
Well, all I'd like to say is, I am glad I was part of the board that initially hired you. Probably one of the wisest decisions I've been involved in making. You have shown professionalism, I really do appreciate it. I'm surprised, however, you didn't say what I heard another Marine say to a sailor, is, "Thank you for delivering us."
Well, they didn't deliver us to a lot of good places.
I'm just, I'm going to echo what everyone else, and I'm newer to the board, but Bill has been in charge, I guess you could say escorting me here, maybe to the beach, when it came time to go around to all the schools when I first came on board. And I just appreciate it all the time that he spent. He didn't have to do what we did, and I value his time. And I do catch him on a few occasions, like behind me, running his fingers along the top of the lockers, and he took the time to look at the details of every school while we were there, so I appreciate it.
I have to say, Bill, that I met you in K, and I was on the family side of things. And you've always added, going to add a higher ticket, always done what you said you wanted to do. And I hate to be once on the board, and I've seen a little more of a closer person than you could be this, but also I know you're enjoying the time, so my best to you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Anything I can say, or?
Well, I appreciate this, and I don't know how you kept it secret, but I saw my wife walk in, and I figured something was up. I saw her.
Bill, why don't you introduce your wife?
Say, would you stand up? This is my wife, Susan, and my son, my daughter. Well, thank you very much. It's been, it's been quite a journey, and it was a tough decision, but I think it was time. I need to, there's so many people in the school system that I need to get out of the way of. So I think, I think the system's going to be very good. And I'm sorry to leave, but I'm looking forward to, to a different, different chapter. And I did this several years ago when I left the Marine Corps, so I know it's a different change, and I'm just going to have to adjust to it, but I think it's, I think it's time. But I really appreciate everything that you've done. I appreciate you allowing me to be here, and allowing me to be in this job, because it's really been beneficial to me. It's been great working with all the principals, and all the schools, and all the kids. It's just been really great. I couldn't have asked for another, a greater, better job than this. I've been in service pretty much from when I graduated from school, and just in a service-related job. Military, and now here, and so it's, it's great. I wouldn't have changed it for anything in the world. So thank you very much, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
I don't want to shake you, yeah, I want to hug.
Did you hear his last tone?
I don't see real well, but I hear real good.
Now, we will do a, a more, a formal reception sometime, sometime closer to the end of the month, but we couldn't, like I said, we couldn't let this one pass.
No. And thank you for doing that, Dr. Markley. Wonderful.
Did you ever catch any ling cod fishing up there? Cod fish? Cod? Up at Woodby Island? Did you ever do much fishing?
No, I just went in and out.
All Navy guys.
You won't quit, will you?
Only, only the Navy had time, leisure time.
I had time for fishing. Okay, call to the audience, we had no one sign up for an agenda item. Item six, under administrative personnel, administrative recommendations, appendix A, Dr. Markley.
All right, we have several administrative recommendations. First is in Mr. Hans's shop. It is the custodial administrative recommendation. Mr. Thaddeus Adams, Mr. Adams currently serves as an area tech coordinator in the Technology Division, previously served as a mechanical technician with the New Hanover County Shift Technician at Corning, a missile systems technician in the Army. He has an AA degree in electronics from DeVry University. I would recommend Mr. Thaddeus Adams.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Is Mr. Adams here?
Approved.
I thought so, yes. Please stand up. This is Mr. Thaddeus Adams. Second recommendation, Assistant Principal at Gregory. Recommendation is Dr. Rick Hessman. Currently, Dr. Hessman is a principal at East Albemarle, and ESL teacher at Stanley Community College. Previously served as a principal at Locust Elementary, adjunct professor at UNC Charlotte, principal at Stanley Academy, and AP at Concord. He was also the athletic director, coach, teacher at South Stanley High School. His contract will begin on August 11th and be in effect until June 30th. He has a BA in Communication and Journalism from Atlantic Christian in Wilson, a bachelor's degree in physical ed from Campbell in Bois Creek, a master's degree in physical ed from A&amp;T, a master's degree in school curriculum and supervision from UNC Charlotte, and his doctoral education leadership is from Wingate University. I recommend Dr. Rick Hessman for, as Assistant Principal.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
It's approved. Hi, Mr. Hessman here. All right. Second recommendation is also Assistant Principal at Gregory. Is Ms. Stephanie Smith, currently serving as the instructional coach at Gregory. Previously served at Forest Hills as the instructional coach, and partially as a teacher in reading interventionist. She has also served as an elementary Title I teacher and math teacher in Spokane, in Spokane, Washington, and a Title I teacher in Texas. Her contract will begin 11/1/2016 and be in effect until June 30th, 2018. She has a BA, a degree in elementary ed from Eastern Washington, a master's degree in instructional design and technology from New York, and administrative license executive leadership studies from Gardner Webb University.
Move for approval.
Second.
Comments, questions? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Is Ms. Smith here? I thought so, yeah. You got somebody with you, don't you?
My husband married, and my two children, late in the title.
Congratulations. That concludes your administrative recommendations.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, item seven, Head Start. Uh, Mr. Higgins, your name is A, B, C, D, E, and F. You just want to go, and let me know when you get through with one, and I'll call B, and then let me know when you're through, and we'll call C. But the Head Start report from our liaison, Mr. Edward Higgins.
Okay. To begin with, I did check, I do not have a liaison report, that's number A, tonight, because we're not in school, so. There is, however, a can report. We have 260 students enrolled, and we have the required 26 special age kids enrolled already. So we're, we've met that requirement. Monthly expenditure report, I don't, you, you have it up there, I assume y'all have, also have a copy of it. As you can see, clearly, getting ready for the school year is expensive. They have spent, already spent $151,000, having covered $1,300, which is 10% of their budget. They have not had to do any health support services yet. They have been working on parental involvement, pre-K ready, readiness and remedial supplies, transportation services, and the indirect cost. So the total that they have spent to date is about $208,000. They have 1.9 million of their budget still remaining, which is a sizable portion of it. Other than the indirect cost, you can see it's been, it's around 13 to, 10 to 13%. Well, pre-K readiness was 20%. Then there's the developmental cost, which at this point in time, they have incurred nothing in, in that. So that is the report on the expenditures. Anybody have any questions on that? I do have Ms. Small here, Smiles here, if anybody has a specific question that I cannot answer. Now, with respect to the program information report, uh, this is a report that is put together for the Area Four, which we are, that's where we are, out of Atlanta. It has some general information. As you can see, 260 students are, is what we are authorized to have. If you go to page two, we have 147 three-year-olds and 146 four-year-olds. 240 of them are below 100% of the federal poverty line. 26 are on public assistance, nine are status as foster children, nine is, are status as homeless, and nine are over the income limits. Forty of the students, we note, are in the second year of the Head Start program. Thirty-one students left the program. And I think I would just have to ask, if anybody has a specific question as to why they left, there's nothing noted here. If anybody has a specific question on that?
That would be interesting, because did they leave it because we didn't meet their needs, or did they transfer out of county?
Do you know, do you know why they left? Why, why, it notes here, the total number of preschool students who left the program anytime after classes or home visits began and did not re-enroll, 31. Do you have any knowledge about, in general, why they didn't come back?
Because throughout the year, we have dropouts, people relocate to different counties, they move constantly. We have a transition, or a very transient population. So the women in the desert move to different counties.
Would note that 133 of the students are headed to kindergarten. On page four, is a breakdown of the enrollment, Hispanic or Latino, non-Hispanic or Latino. You can see that, what that breakdown is. 234, their primary language is English. Fifty-three, primary language is Spanish in the household. One is listed, excuse me, five listed as Middle Eastern or Southeast, South Asian language, which I'm told is probably Cambodian. And then African language is one. We're providing transportation for 215 children, and there are four buses. I, I find, also, if you go on to page six now, um... Total number of staff members, regardless of funding source, Head Start staff, 61. Of these, the number who currently are former Head Start or early child, Head Start parents, four. Of these, number who left last year, five. Who were replaced, five. There's 190 volunteers, and 32 of those are current or former Head Start or early Head Start parents. We do not actually have early Head Start. We have just Head Start. This is a, this form is one that's required by the federal government, so it has some stuff on it that, that we don't have to deal with. On average number of hours, you can see 40 hours a week. Total number of preschool, number of preschool child development staff by position, 15 classroom teachers, 15 assistants. If we get over to the next page...
Which is page one?
Page seven. And I was, you know, going through this, I was surprised. We have five of our classroom teachers that have advanced degrees, and one of our teacher assistants has an advanced degree. We have 10 classroom teachers who have baccalaureate degrees, two of the teacher assistants have baccalaureate degrees, and three of the teacher assistants have early childhood degrees, probably from the community college, I would guess. Let's see, let me go on over to most everything else, yes, yes, sir.
My, my question is, you, you mentioned 190 volunteers. Are you, Ms. Smiles, are you still looking for more volunteers, if people wanted to volunteer?
Well, that's really at school level, and we have other schools throughout the county, but absolutely always will refer volunteers to help out other schools.
Okay, thank you.
If you go to page 11, you will see that we have three members of our faculty who are listed as being proficient in Spanish, and that's the only language that, other than English, that we have people who are proficient. And we lost two people. One changed job fields, and the other one retired. So that explains the two that we lost. I, I would just, and I don't know how detailed you want me to report on this information, but, um, number of children, uh... Number of children who have Medicaid, 284 current. At the end of the year, we had 291. Number of enrolled in state-only funded insurance, 262. Number with private health insurance, 29. Number of children... insurance, twenty-nine, number of children with no insurance, two. Number of children with an ongoing source of continuous accessible healthcare, number of children at the end of the enrollment year, when you added everything up, was two hundred and ninety-three, although we're limited to two hundred and sixty kids at any one time. So that's the cumulative of the, of the ones we've lost, plus the ones we have.
Yeah, look, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The two children that have no health insurance, how do we accommodate their needs? Why, why are they not covered in one of those categories?
Because both families declined services. One was for religion reasons, and one was a blessing. So what we do is we, our family service staff, reach out to them and try to give them Medicaid applications and different applications for insurance. But that's only two that declined, which was very, very low level for my experience.
But they would get assist, they could have assistance if, if they were in need, okay, thank you.
For that to apply and.
The other thing is, all two hundred and sixty of the students currently enrolled are listed as being current on their appropriate preventative and primary healthcare, and there were, what, four who have been to the school but are no longer there, who did not meet that criteria. If you go to the next page, page sixteen, number of children who have been determined by a healthcare professional to be up to date on all immunizations appropriate for their age, two hundred and fifty-two, that means that there are eight students who were enrolled who are not, were not current on their health, their immunizations. Over the course of the total year, however, two hundred and ninety-three were up to date. So I don't, how did you, why wouldn't it have been two sixty if you've, if two ninety-three for the whole year?
The two ninety-three has to balance down with EIR, and that's really key, like at enrollment, so we have to put ninety-three to balance that off. So, your question was the eight?
Well, there's, number of children at enrollment, two hundred and fifty-two, most everything else has been two sixty, and then you had thirty-three who left, and that came up to the, I assume that came to the two ninety-three.
It happens with the immunizations, so they, that is below the two sixty.
Right.
Do we not have a requirement that they have to be up to date with their shots?
We do, and at the end of the year, they are up to date with their shots, but they can decline services.
But can't we decline having them as a student if they don't have their shots up to date?
Not for religion reasons.
I understand, not for religion, but other than that?
For the mandated shots, correct, we can terminate them.
And what are those mandated shots?
I'm, I'm not sure, I, I can get that information, but it was listed. On health physical?
Excuse me, could you look to the microphone? I don't think they're picking you up for the, for the.
They want you to come up here.
Broadcast, the TV, I don't think that they're picking you up. Thank you.
But for the mandated requirements, yes, then they do not meet the enrollment requirements, therefore they're terminated. And a lot of these are also indicated on their health physicals, which looks a little bit different than the kindergarten physical, so they have to have the lead, hemoglobin, and a few other indicators, because they're three and four years old versus kindergarten. So, but we do have a few that do decline on some of those tests.
And if they decline for any reason other than religion, what happens?
We send them a warning letter, and, and they get thirty days before they get terminated from the program. Because the whole idea is for health purposes, is to have them ready for kindergarten and get those intervention services, so that they're medically and health ready for those.
And do we, how do we ensure that, I don't know how to, I know we need to be sensitive about people's religious preference and their practice of their religion, but how do you determine that, yes, in fact, it truly is because of their religion that they're not getting their shots? Or, or can you?
We, we do very basic, because of confidentiality reasons, very basic, but there's been some discussion with that, at a different level, at a national level.
National level.
Yeah, so, yeah.
Thank you.
With respect to the family, and you might want to just state, you might want, you might want to just stay there, because there may be some other questions. With respect to the families, two hundred and seventy-four families, seventy-nine of these are two-parent families, a hundred and ninety-five are single-parent families. The seventy-nine two-parent families, seventy-five live with parents, one lives with a grandparent, three are in, in the foster system. The single parents, a hundred and seventy-seven are, are the mother, seven's the father, three grandparents, two live with relatives of the grandparents, and six are in foster care. As far as employment, twenty percent of the parents are employed, twenty, excuse me, twenty of the parents are employed, both parents are employed, in fifty-five families, one parent or guardian is employed, and in four, neither are working. Of the single family parents, a hundred and fifteen, the parent or guardian is employed, eighty is not working. Number of families, of all families, at least one parent or guardian member of the United States Military, that's four. So, I mean, you know, I, I can continue to go through this page by page if you would like. I mean, basically, we are serving a very diverse group of people, both people of Hispanic, African Americans, whites, people from the Caribbean, Native Americans, Alaskans, so it's a, it's a case where we are providing a very valuable service to the children of New Hanover County.
And this is a mandated annual report that you must share with your governing body?
Right, right.
That's my work here.
So rather than just sit here and read it to you.
Sharing this information.
Bruce has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, excuse me, I didn't hear it.
Ms. Smiles, what Mr. Higgins, what I'm getting from what Mr. Higgins is saying is, there's a lot of detail into the demographics behind this program, and I think in a prior meeting, you showed there had been growth and success. What, what are your, what's your perspective on Head Start? I mean, the, it's the three and four-year-olds, and it's a program that serves a lot of children that wouldn't be served otherwise. What is your, anything you want to add to that?
I just think it's just critical to understand that we work with the whole child in the social emotional pieces, preparing them for kindergarten readiness, and we're mandated to do the family pieces in the critical mental health and behavior and health services, so that when they do go to kindergarten, they have their immunizations, they're ready to go. We're, we're the first people, the first school, early school, to touch these little ones, and it's just critical that we get them healthy before they start kindergarten. They go through their dental mobile, not only screenings, but dental exams. So, it's just, so, it's such a, more than, we're going to get to the academics, they're a large piece of what we do, but we, we, we got to get these families that are of high needs, the, the well-rounded services before they're ready for kindergarten, and that's critical for our area that we're serving.
Do you have a, a breakdown of the, the hundred and ninety volunteers that you have? What's the breakdown of the, the parents versus community members?
We don't, but I would like to add that piece to possibly our monthly report that we report on with the liaison, I think that, that would be an asset for you guys to know.
Yeah, I think that would be good information to have, because that's something that, you know, we keep talking about, is getting that parent parental involvement, I think that would be.
I think that's a great idea.
Okay, thank you.
Do you do any follow-up with these students once they get into kindergarten to see if, what the Head Start program has done to, to prepare them and how they equate to the other children?
We, we are working on a process for that, we're entering our third year, but we will be doing that.
Okay.
Very excited to see that.
And a transition, I'm sure, with the physical needs.
In those forty students that return to Johnson, we have to keep in mind that countywide, we have other programs, so a lot of those students are filtered into their district schools such as Freeman, such as C-Rac in their Bellamy districts, and so a lot of the three-year-olds that didn't return back to Johnson went throughout our four-year-old program, so that's very good news.
Do we have a comparison of the success of Head Start versus the success of our regular preschools?
Not yet, ma'am.
When do we anticipate doing that? I mean, if we're going into our third year?
We, we were wanting to get on a four-year plan and start that process after implementing our three to three and a half years of our conscious discipline and also our creative curriculum, and, and to go, once we have our teachers equipped with that and, and have a little bit of longevity behind us with some PD, professional development with that, so that we can have some authentic data.
How do we anticipate measuring the success of one versus the success of another?
And we're going to have to start those conversations by mid-January. Lots of ideas, but nothing concrete.
I think it's.
So any suggestions is always welcome.
Ms. Kavanaugh, I think it's important to keep in mind, this is just the second year. There were some students who came out last year, but they only went through one year of the program. This is just the first time that three and four-year-old students are now going into kindergarten. So I would, well, four-year-olds are going into kindergarten, but I mean, you have, we have had them for a three-year, as a three-year-old and as a four-year-old, many of them. So they're now going into kindergarten, much the same as the North Carolina pre-K students, which have, we have had that program for years at Mary Washington Hall.
Yeah, New Hanover was the leader in that, absolutely.
So, you know, I, I, it, it's going to be a case of, number one, identifying, which we'll, we'll be able to do, who are the Head Start students, who are the students who came to the North Carolina pre-K, and who are the students who are either coming without any pre-K or without, or coming from one of the private centers, and be able to say, all right, you know, how are these students doing, how are these students doing compared to this student, compared to those students? And I think we are just now reaching the point where we will have any cohort from Head Start that we would be able to compare to any other group such as North Carolina pre-K or Smart Start or any of those programs, so.
Well, we've had our preschool for going on twenty years.
Well, yeah, but not Head Start.
No.
So that's what I'm saying.
It wasn't, well, there was Head Start, but it wasn't under our.
That's, that's what I, that's, that's kind of the message I'm, I'm communicating. The Head Start program now is in, is beginning its third year, which means it has now graduated to kindergarten, students who have been at Head Start more than a single year, some students, not all of them, some of them have came in as, as, as four-year-olds, but there are at least some who've come in as, as three and now, then went to four and now into kindergarten, much the same as, as North Carolina pre-K has operated. So that now we've got a cohort of those students that we can then compare to the cohort of North Carolina pre-K students, compare that to the cohort of students who come from private early childhood centers, and compare that to students who have not been in any early childhood center now. You know, it'll, it'll be interesting, because it is, this is still a growing process for us. I mean, as you said, North Carolina pre-K has been here for.
Since day.
Well, for a good while, for a good while. So it's, it's established, and it has, has curriculums and processes and all, and has a, a category of teachers who have taught over and over and know what works and what doesn't necessarily work. There might be, there's going to be a little bit of loiting, so I, I would, I would caution, I, I believe that our Head Start students will do well, but they may not quite do as well, may, I'm saying, may not do quite as well as North Carolina pre-K, because we're still having to get experience in doing it.
Well, it's going to be difficult to compare, say, private preschools versus Head Start or North Carolina preschool, because it may be, it most likely is a completely different socioeconomic level.
Well, but nevertheless, we have found that when we started doing pre-K as North Carolina pre-K, this, when they got to the third grade, our students were performing, I think we had like ninety-five percent of those students were being proficient, whereas it was nowhere near that for those who did not have the pre-K, and those who were coming from other programs, no matter what the socioeconomic system was. So I, I'm not saying we're going to have ninety-five percent of these, but, you know, again, we're talking about, are they prepared to go into kindergarten? And then kindergarten, first grade, second grade, and by the time they get to third grade, they have the foundations to be successful, both in reading, math, and everything else that we test, test in the third grade. So we feel like that we are giving them that foundation that they were not getting before.
Well.
Is that a fair statement?
My, and I think that, my question, and I, I was kind of emailing you two about the conscious discipline program, and is there something embedded in that program to be able to determine about, behaviorally, are we making a difference? And can that be added to, because that's an important aspect of it, not just looking at the academic component, but the behavioral component, are they able to, are we, are we making a difference? I mean, I'm looking at those mental health numbers, you know, fifty-some kids who are needing mental health services, that's an astonishing number to me, at this age.
And, and we're on year ter, year two with that, and that will be measured through our social and emotional component learning area, so that we take those factors into consideration, and once we have the coaching after one year, I think we're going to be seeing some numbers looking a little bit different with that. But it will be measurable, not as captable of like learning your letters and, and of course, doing your language and early literacy.
But the amount of intervention necessary?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
It's very important.
So that may be something that we can actually look at, okay, the number of interventions.
At next outcomes, when we do outcomes at the end of the year, we can highlight those to see where we're at.
Right, so less, less about concrete ABCs and one-two-threes, but more about interventions, right?
Let's get them ready for that.
How long, how long did Head Start operate before New Hanover County schools took it over? Do you recall in New Hanover County?
I don't have a true number, but many years.
Many, many years.
It was.
Probably decades would be a good way to describe it.
Yeah, we tried, we, we would have been trying to take it over for, geez, darn, how long?
Quite a while, because there were quite a few requests coming from parents and from others requesting.
And what we were seeing on the testing.
Right.
Because we now have a curriculum that flows into kindergarten, so there is a connection.
And we have qualified, we have qualified teachers. Whereas they were, I mean, it's not, they were doing, I guess, the best they could, but the fact was that they.
But we do remind people that this was a process that we had to go through, and it was not just, we would like to take over the Head Start program, we had to be approved, so it was a long process.
And we will have to be re-approved periodically.
And we have to be re-approved, yes. So we have to.
You're making a huge difference.
Yes.
But so far, we're getting good recommendations. Good, good reports back from Atlanta and that's who we have to keep happy.
We're on the A-list.
Uh, all right, uh, the next thing, and when Tabitha called me, she said this was almost my meeting. The, the next thing is the Head Start information, uh, report, uh, contains the, uh, no, excuse me, the written plan, I guess is what this is. The written plan, um, and you can see, I mean, it is, it is detailed. It talks about parent committees, the policy committee, Head Start planning and operations, uh, communications, uh, record-keeping, communications with families, monitoring, uh...
And this is shared every year and this is your blueprint at Johnson, um, pre-K Center, um, in alignment with your Head Start performance stand, standards that are mandated. And that's why you're seeing, um, sub-top, such as monitoring and record-keeping because it's, uh, taking your Head Start performance standards and, um, defining locally how you're going to roll out those services at Johnson. Mandated to share with governing board only.
Uh, so, I mean, I don't know how, how, again, how much detail, uh, proposed prepar, uh, preparation, refunding, uh, other funding submissions, uh, facilities and materials, Head Start equipment, toys. It's interesting, when I went to the state Head Start meeting, uh, with Shannon, uh, when did we go, back in?
March twenty-third.
March, okay, geez, seems, seems like it was a year ago, but anyway. Uh, one of the things they were talking about in doing the budget was the fact that taking an inventory, you know, don't just ask for stuff because you asked for it last year. I mean, if you ask for, you know, uh, six thousand dollars for, uh, new play equipment or educational equipment, how much of that do you still have? And so, one of the things they were emphasizing was the fact that you spend some time looking at what you have, what you can reuse and not so much that you would cut your budget request, but you may be able to put your budget request in other places if you don't have to be buying things. So, I mean, it is, there is for the, uh, administrators and, and others, there is an attempt to make this a, uh, cost-efficient, not simply, geez, let's see how much we can spend, but, uh, a cost-efficient operation. Facilities and materials and equipment plan, uh, again, how that should be, uh, addressed. So, uh, program will provide physical environment, facilities conducive to learning and reflective of the different stages of development of each child. If you've been over there, you saw they have, the county has provided an environmental learning gardens where they can grow things. Uh, and it's, it's, it's interesting to watch the kids when they go out to, to play. I, I was over there and they were all running around and, you know, some had orange vests on, some had red vests on, and some had green vests on. I said, what's with the vest? That's how they keep up with their kids. You know, when it gets, comes time to, i- if you, if you see a, a kid with a red vest and he's going around the corner, we know which teacher, the, the teacher knows who they need to be looking for. Likewise, when it comes time to get the kids in, uh, they, they line them up and they know which kids are supposed to come to be with them. So, I, 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 I thought that was a, I think somebody had seen that somewhere else and that's where it got adopted from, but, uh, I mean, you know, they, it's, it's, it's really a, a, um, an attempt to provide a quality environment for all these kids, as I've said before. But, uh, safety education and first thirty days, school teachers will provide lessons for the children on safety education. They have in every classroom, you know, where you go, if there's a fire, how you get out. They make sure that they, they wash their hands on a regular basis, uh, all kinds of things such as that. But all that is laid out in these documents as to, so that somebody can't say, gee, I didn't know I was supposed to do that. Well, I mean, they are supposed to have got, read through these documents and be familiar with them. You know, how they, they handle the food. Uh, one of the things I did raise a question, I don't know whether they ever did or not. I was over there and they bring the food to the classroom. And one of the questions being, I raised was, well, you know, when they go to, uh, most of the, uh, kindergartens and elementary school, they're actually gonna go to a cafeteria. You know, when are you gonna teach these kids how to go into a cafeteria, sit down and eat? Now, the discussion was that, that was in like April, I was over there. They were gonna try to do that the last month to kinda teach them to do that. Uh, I don't know whether y'all ever did or not, I hadn't been back to see, did they?
I think they transitioned the four-year-olds.
To get, well, there's four-year-olds are the ones that you'd be most interested in.
And, and we'll look at, uh, what true school readiness skills are.
Yeah. So, anyway, uh, they, they do try to get them ready to go to kindergarten.
Yes, absolutely.
So, uh, and then they also discuss how they recruit the kids, uh, you know, how, how, there are some standards about who are getting in. I mean, it's not just, it's not strictly first come, first served. As I said, there were some kids who, uh, whose parents did make over the, uh, the poverty level income, a few.
And those were IEP students?
Okay. So, uh, in any event, uh, the community report, I said, where's the community report? I flipped through too many pages. Oh, uh, the community report is, uh, appendix E. And, uh, it is basically data on, um, the, the funding, how many kids they have, how much they've spent on transportation and indirect costs, uh, parental involvement, workshops offered and, and site meetings are as needed, uh, family resource specialist and parent goal planning, policymakers for policy council, parent workshops. And what they do to, do to help implement that using the state and national Head Start conferences, stress management, managing challenge behavior in the classroom, classroom appropriate, uh, practices and leadership in early childhood. And again, the goal is to get children ready to go to kindergarten.
And this is the snapshot of the previous data that's required. Um, all of these pieces will be on Johnson pre-K Center's website once we share them with Policy Council on Thursday night.
And then the last thing is quarterly non-federal sheriff report. Payroll, one hundred and seventy-three thousand, utilities, seven thousand. Uh, non-federal sheriff grant, four hundred and eighty-one thousand. We have two hundred and sixty kids, ten in North Carolina pre-K for a total of two hundred and seventy students total in the, uh, in the system. So, Ms. Chairman, that is my report.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Higgins, any other questions for Ms. Higgins?
No, I truly appreciate having these reports and having them in, um, on the website as well as the effort that Mr. Higgins puts forth to keep us informed because we are truly accountable.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you, next item on the agenda, item eight, uh, under information, item A, National School Boards Association, National School Boards Association Conference Report, Mr. Higgins?
Well, I know we've been trying to do this for several months. Well, as you can see, the, the conference was April ninth through the eleventh, so, uh, yes, and I'd always, I like to come back and, I'll, two things. I like to report to you, but I also know that there's always this kind of, you know, sense, and I wanna make sure the press knows this, sense that, uh, a lot, that, that elected officials go to these events and don't really go to the event. They just use it as an opportunity to go someplace. Well, I wanna make sure everybody knows that when I go, I go to go to the event. And that's the reason I, I like to bring these reports back to the, uh, to you, to let you know that, you know, what I have gathered out of it, but at the same time, I would like to encourage other members of the board to attend these things. I mean, I, I enjoy going and meeting with people from all across the country, hearing stories, hearing things. And I think they, it really helps because there may only be one real glimmer of facts that you get out of, but that may be the one wonderful thing that you, that you get. And, uh, so, you know, I just, I, I want to encourage, I mean, the last, the last slide, and I'm, excuse me, jumping ahead, the last slide shows that there, the, uh, next year's conference is in Denver, Colorado, uh, on March, the, um, what is it, March twenty-fifth through twenty-seventh. I will say upfront, I will not be attending. But, uh, I do hope that at least one member of this board does choose to attend, if not a couple. Because I will also tell you that although you, you don't pay for it, this board gets double-dipping when I go. Because many of these, uh, sessions were attended by my wife to pick up the, uh, material and to make notes and all. I don't charge you for it, I pay for her to go and everything, pay her plane, plane fare and all that, and pay her enrollment to be able to get into the, uh, the event.
You do have to pay extra.
Uh, but, uh, she does go to some of these things until she gets, sometimes until she gets bored. But anyway, uh, she does, but anyway, uh, what I wanna give you a quick report on, this was the title of the session, Looking in the Mirror Board Self-Evaluation, Innovative Learning Designed for College Career and Readiness. That's one of the things I did try to, to, uh, uh, concentrate on because I knew we were moving towards the, uh, uh, career and technical education. Uh, grades A, B, or incomplete, Every Student Succeeds Act, the EESA, Transforming School Climate for Gay, Lesbian, Bisexual, and Transgender Students, A Blueprint for Educational Leaders. I will say that I got into that one by mistake, but it turned out to be rather interesting. Uh, career education, understanding poverty, early learning, community partnerships, youth in school governance, then the exhibition hall, a couple of statements about that, and the general session speakers. In Looking Through the Mirror, one of the things emphasized is that this is not an evaluation of board members, but the board as an entity looking at itself, um, to identify its strengths and weaknesses. After self-evaluation, what is the board going to do to improve? How a board functions can correlate to student performance. Chaotic boards often are boards with low tenure. Boards should be engaged professional development to improve performance, that's, that's kind of what I was just talking about. I mean, the suggestion that, that board members attend things such as the National School Board Association. Board sheet should include activities designed for team building. And the question came up about, you know, who's doing this? And this, they said, this was actually presented by a school district in, I think it was Missouri. But they said that they had been in contact with all the states and that the state school board associations were supposed to be working on developing a, a, um, um, curriculum or a program to do this kind of evaluation within their state that would be reflective of rules and regulations that the state has. So, for example, they might suggest, you know, if, uh, if the expectation is that you get twelve hours of, uh, education credit, uh, is every school board member in that, on that, on your board doing that type of things? So, uh, they were suggesting that, that we contact the state to find out exactly where they are and if they are in fact helping to develop a, uh, a survey. Innovative learning for career and for college and career. Uh, this was an interesting one, it was a school district in Texas. Mr. Hans will probably appreciate this, I think. Uh, they had a high school, a technical high school. And the reason they had a technical high school was, they built a high school and didn't have any students to put in it. It was sitting empty. And so, they decided, gee, what are we gonna do with this high school? So, they decided to make it a technical high school. And they, it's only been open five years and they have eleven hundred students. And they are a district that's just slightly smaller than us, they had about twenty-four, twenty-five thousand students. So, uh, five skills needed by the students, they were talking about that we need, that you need to teach at a technical, uh, career training school. Collaboration, that has become the big thing, how to collaborate. Uh, communication and interpersonal skills, developing problem-solving, time management, and engaging in leadership. They grouped students as units for their high school experience to develop many of these skills. I mean, they actually, kinda almost like our last SIM, they moved through the whole school as small groups. So, they, uh, you, you had a joint interest and they worked together. Uh, it's important to provide middle schoolers with an understanding of career choices, we've talked about that before. Work with local employers to develop a shared understanding of educational goals for students. Uh, they, they talked about the fact that there are jobs that sound exciting, but there's only openings for five or ten people. You know, do you wanna be a, a, uh, a carpenter where there may be two hundred openings, but you could be working outside? Or do you wanna be a, uh, uh, a political consultant that you may or may not be able to get a job as? They also said that you should include some kind of, of art or fine arts, cultural classes, as well as foreign languages as part of the program. And know why you're teaching what is being taught. Don't just teach it for the sake of teaching it, but know what it is supposed to accomplish. With respect to grades, this is the, uh, A, B, or incomplete. The suggestion was that to encourage students not to feel like they're failures. Don't give them ifs, give them incompletes and give them an opportunity to complete the work. If they can't do A and B work, then make it an incomplete and let them work to make it into an A or B. It was the general thesis of that. Uh, learning is the result of trial and error, yet we punish the error. I know when I was in grad school, they used to talk about thinking outside the box. If you're not willing to take risks, uh, then you're never destined to, to improve. Score activities should not be for the grade, but for the worth of doing, exploring a child's curiosity. Have students explain and defend their work. Motivate stu, motivating students will continue, motivated students will continue to acquire skills and knowledge. Consider showing to the public examples of students' work to demonstrate what they're learning. Work with parents and the community to explain the goal of education. Students should graduate if they can demonstrate competency in core subjects. I attended the Every Student Succeeds Act, EESA. U.S. Department of Education has been mandated to change from No Child Left Behind. State and local districts are responsible for developing a plan under EESA. Secretary of Education cannot mandate what states do. ESL classes will be under Title I. Ninety-five percent of the testing requirements still remain. The term highly qualified teacher is eliminated. Teacher evaluation under Title II is no longer required and additional funding is to be provided for LEAs with large ESL populations. So, I mean, that was the gist of that. They, they went through every, I forget how many sections there are, I think it's, Dr. Mark, do you remember, it's like twelve or thirteen sections? But, I mean, some of them were inconsequential, it's like- It's like, you know, Native Americans and stuff like that, that for the most part, we did not, we did not have enough to be impacted by that. But continuing in that, Title, Title Five is entitled Twenty-First Century Schools and provides funding for grants for technology and extended day programs. Title Four, I'm sorry. Title Five Allows Local Flexibility and Section Fifty-One oh Two Permits Transfer of Funds in Title One, Two, and Three Programs. Title Six Deals with Native Americans and Their Culture While Title Seven Addresses Payments and Lower Property Taxes. That, that's actually was aimed at places like, I guess, Onslow County that has a large military base and non-taxable property. Title Eight Provides For an Omnibusman to Work with Private Schools in the District. Title Nine Requires States Develop a Plan to Address Homeless Students. Next thing, as I said, I, I actually was going to the program next door and went in the wrong door. So I ended up in the LGBT student presentation. And of course, this was prior to the Fourth Circuit decision in Virginia. But they did point out that lower courts have split on the issue of transgender students. They gave the case of Johnson versus University of Pittsburgh over transition rights. In that case, the lower court ruled against OCR in what they were trying to implement. Belief of Presenters That This is an Issue That Is Not Going Away. One Suggested Relief Was to Create Privacy Areas with Curtains Between the Two Sexes. OCR for the Department of Education Have Consistently Ruled Against Any Schools That Fails To Allow Transgender Students to Use Facilities to Correspond With Their Gender Identity. So I don't think there's anything brand new about that. I just, it's, it, one of the things that the presenter said, that in fifteen years, it's probably going to be commonplace. He did bring up North Carolina and HB two. I did not say anything.
I have a question.
Yes.
Under the second bullet, it says that the decision was ruled against OCR.
Right.
But then under the fourth bullet, it says OCR has consistently ruled against any school that fails to allow.
Well, I mean-
So is this saying that OCR is going to get you, but the courts might let you free?
Basically. I mean, University of Pittsburgh, OCR ruled against the University of Pittsburgh. They took it to court and the district court, federal district court, in that case, ruled in favor of the University of Pittsburgh. But, you know, it's like anytime you deal with, we've dealt with OCR in the past, quality education is not number one on their list.
I realize that.
Again, going back to career education. Should Formally Begin No Later Than the Eighth Grade, But Should Be Addressed in the Elementary Schools. This is a little bit different approach. Instead of middle schools, they were saying you need to go down into the elementary schools and start talking to students about it and parents. They pointed out that students are in debt to the tune of one point three trillion dollars for education, but they can't even find a job.
Bernie was going to take care of that.
Well, it's like, it's, it's like the thing that we, at the CTE meeting that I attended yesterday, was talking about the expecta, somebody was mentioning that people were looking, I think it was Duke was, Wallens was talking about that the builders are looking for people who can do building. And I'm thinking, you know, and we've got, tourism is probably, if not the greatest revenue source, is probably at least second. And in talking about, you know, where to start the pro, the, our career technical program, both those programs are in the downtown campus of Cape Fear Community College. So, I mean, having, having a building at the north campus would not necessarily serve those, those programs very well. But anyway, students are in debt to the tune of one point three trillion dollars. Important to Actively Counsel Students on the Realities of Educational Opportunity, Job Opportunities, Including Costs, Internships, Job Demands, and Most Importantly, Job Availability. CE Teachers Must Be Committed to Help Students By Information, Seeking Business Partners and Interns. And what they were saying was quite often the CTE teachers are the ones who know the industry. And they're the ones who know who you talk to, who, who do you reach out to? And so, while we would have people who might go out trying to recruit internships, the CTE, CTE teachers probably in the best position to be able to do that. Develop Individualized Planning Sheets with Goals and How Those Goals Will Be Achieved. Incorporate Career Goals and Planning with Other Courses Such As Writing, Math, Science, and Art. So it's not carved in stone type approach. Encourage High School Students to Seek Internships in Their Interests, Even If Voluntary During the Summer or Other School Breaks, to See What Is Required and If They Like Doing the Job. They did, gave an example of a student who thought she wanted to be a nurse until she did an internship and realized that there is actually blood and other things going on when you're being a nurse. So, decided after about a three-week internship or shadowing, that was not what she wanted to do. Understanding Poverty. Quality Schools Begin with Leaders Who Are Committed to Equity. This Includes, this includes understanding the influence of poverty in their students' lives. Poverty for a Family of Four Is Below Twenty-four thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars per year. However, it's estimated that the level should be between thirty-seven and sixty-seven thousand, depending on where one lives. That should be one, not all lives. My typing could do with no. I mean, if you live in New York or DC, it's going to be difficult. Educators Must Separate the Effects of Poverty on Students' Sense of Self From Their Living Conditions. These are students from low socioeconomic homes, not from low, not low socioeconomic students. Communicate the Belief That Students Can Succeed and That Education Should Be a High Priority. I think that last bullet is the real key of what I got out of this was that, you know, you've got to be positive about it. You've got to tell the student they can be a success and you've got to do everything to make sure they feel like a success. I think whenever you see some of the programs like the Harlem Academy, that's really what they, they're advocating, that education is valuable and you really encourage that. Early Learning: Incorporating STEM. Quality Early Learning Can Help Avoid Later Special Education Costs and Increase Graduation Rates. Quality Pre-K Raises Student Readiness from Eighty-five to Ninety-five Percent. This was a school system out of Pennsylvania. STEM Jobs Expect to Increase Seventeen Percent of the Next Five Years. Encouraging Local Companies to Fund STEM Camps at the More Challenged Schools. Speak to Children at Early Age About What They Want to Do and to Encourage Them in Their Education. Encourage Industry to Lobby Legislators for More STEM Funding.
You might want to tell the public what STEM is.
Oh, stands for science, technology, in, anyway, science, technology, engineering, and math.
Mathematics.
Oh, mathematics, okay. I just heard math, anyway.
Okay.
Youth and Student Governance. See This as a Training of the Next Generation of Board Members. Need to Encourage at the State Level. For Example, Maryland has a program that is, that encourages students to be involved. For Every Student That Is Involved, There Should Be Five People to Help Mentor Them, Help Them Understand What the Expectations Are and What Their Responsibilities Are. Provide Tangible Supports, Including a Nameplate, Business Cards, and Allow Them to Attend State Meetings at the School System's Cost. Be Prepared to Listen and Not Judge. Look for Leadership Qualities, Not Just the Smartest or the Member of the Student Government. Raise Expectations of These Students by Putting Them on Committees. So that's what's suggested, how, if you're going to incorporate students into the governance process, that's what you ought to do.
And who do you, how do you determine who attends state meetings and gets business cards and things like that?
Well, I mean, you know, if, depending on how we would set that, if we did that, how we set it up, if we had a rep, a representative, I mean, like the last time we did, we had a representative from each of the high schools. And the suggestion is that you don't just simply take the person of the student government or the, the most popular student, you take, you take just really an ordinary student. And how you go about selecting would have to be something we'd have to discuss. But as we had them, as we used to have them sit, you know, they would have a name plate like this and have their name on it. We would give them some business cards. And if there are some state training sessions or even, even like the North Carolina School Board Association meetings or some of the, then we would pay for them to be able to go to those just like we do. And again, the idea being that this helps develop a cadre of people who understand and appreciate what goes into education, not just simple what goes on in the classroom, but what goes on behind the scenes, who can at some point in time take our seats and, and be prepared and trained to do it. All right. Next thing is the Exhibition Hall. I just listed a couple of things that I enjoyed talking to people about. All right, I'm sorry, do you have questions?
No, no.
Oh, okay.
He's looking scared of them.
Couple of things that I talked to the people about. Propane buses? I mean, I realize the state buys, the second time we buy buses and state's not going to buy us propane buses. But a nice thing about the propane buses is, and I would have to defer to Mr. Hans on this, but he was, the guy was talking about the diesel buses and how much oil they use in the engine and stuff. And he said, you know, they don't really use, they use like six quarts in a propane bus as opposed to whatever it takes for a diesel bus, how often you have to change it and all. So anyway, talked to the guy with propane buses, did talk to the individual with the International Bachelor Laureate about an elementary school program of International Bachelor Laureate. Talked to people, so a couple of people were there who engage in foreign travel, will arrange the tours and everything for students going overseas. I came back, I did talk to Velita about this, a group that was involved and would help us if we wanted to get into any kind of crowdfunding ventures for the school, to help raise money for any programs, whether it be the scholarships or anything else. I talked to Dr. Markley about this, the portable planetarium.
Yeah, nice.
They are. And they're not, I mean, you know, they're rather expensive, I guess, in the grand scheme of things, but it was nice because, I mean, they could pull up any day of, of the year and you could see where the stars were, they could bring a planet in. I mean, they, they had, the guy did one thing and you would have sworn the planet was going to smack right into you. I mean, he just started pulling it in and it came running in at you like, you know, Mars. And it's, so I mean, it, it was, it was really fascinating. And it's portable. It's, it's air, compressed air raises the thing up and then they've got like a planetarium that just shoots it up on the screen and they can move it around and do all kinds of things. And lastly, the, a group that would arrange for us to get foreign language teachers. So. Lastly, mentioned a couple of things about some of the speakers. We had three speakers. Dan Rather, Robin Roberts, and Tony Wagner. I did not know who Tony Wagner was until I read the piece on him. Very quickly, Dan Rather said, "No Public Work Is More Essential Than Service on a Local School Board." That he's a product of public education, spoke about the importance of a dedicated teacher, spoke about communications within the community, and said there are some schools that reach out to parents at birth with a gift and stay in touch by providing tools for them as the child grows, which I thought was a wonderful idea to, in fact, actually, when we were at the state Head Start thing, they gave us some, there was some paperwork of where your child should be at from age one month to six months, from six months to one year, from one year to two years, two years, three, that you as a parent could kind of evaluate, how is your child progressing? That I, it caused me to think, you know, maybe that's something we ought to look at, at maybe giving parents, at least from New Hanover County, at the hospital when they leave, that, you know, here's some information and we get an address for them and we, you know, stay in touch with them either over the internet or whatever. The fear that STEM has diminished the teaching of history and civics, that students are becoming ignorant about government, our constitution, and capitalism.
That's true.
In general, public schools in the United States can match any school in the world. So, I mean, this whole thing about we're forty-third or something, according to Dan Rather's is just a, it's, you know, you can knit, you can select here, select here and do, but the fact is, he says that he would put our schools up against any other schools in the world in general. Robin Roberts, "One Must Put Him or Herself in a Position to Be Successful and for Good Things to Happen." Her story was that she wanted to be a, what was it she wanted to do? She wanted to be in the Olympics, but she never got in the Olympics, but she covered the Olympics. So she said in a way she got there after all. Dream Big, Focus Small. Be Able to Define Your Dreams and Don't Let Fear Prevent You From Going Out of Your Comfort Zone. Focus on Solutions to a Problem, Not the Problem. Know That His Child Is an Individual and Help Them to See Their Own Potential. Recruit Quality People Who Want to Be Educators. See It as a Calling, Not as a Job. And the last speaker was a gentleman named Tony Wagner from Harvard University. You know, I really wish they had put him on first because obviously, the last speaker, nobody ever shows, much shows up for. I mean, you may have twelve thousand to hear Dan Rather, you probably had four thousand to hear Tony Wagner, but he was probably the most dynamic of the three speakers that they had lined up. Said that understanding the problem is more important than solution. What You Know Is Far Less Important Than How You Use That Knowledge. Computers Have Taken Away Many Mid-Level White Collar Jobs. Employers Want People Who Can Collaborate and Solve Problems Innovatively. It's Important to Teach Students How to Engage in Problem-Solving Skills. Four Things That Harm Education. A warding individualism Versus Collaborative Teaching. Little Innovation Becomes Leaders or Causes Leaders to Be Isolated. Favoring Specialization. Most Problems Cannot Be Solved by a Single Discipline. The Classroom Culture. A Culture of Educational Consumption. Teacher Teaches, Student Absorbs. Do Things to Encourage Innovative Thinking. The Fear of Failure Creates a System of Compliance. Innovation Demands Risk. Failure Teaches What Does Not Work, So Try a New Way. And lastly, as I said, I would encourage at least one of you to think about attending the NSBA Conference, two thousand seventeen, it'll be in Denver, Colorado, March twenty-fifth through the twenty-seventh. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my, finally concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Tiggins. Any comments, questions for anybody? Ms. Tiggins?
Is it time to adjourn?
Okay, next, and then we'll take a break after. Item B is the Advisory Council for Exceptional Children, Students. The ACES Report. Ms. Seastep.
Your own.
Your own.
All right, thank you for, for including this on the agenda this evening. Ms. Seastep asked for me to speak first and give a little bit of an overview of the collaboration with ACES, the Advisory Council for Exceptional Students. First of all, I Uh, first of all, I want to thank, uh, the board. I want to thank our ACES members, and we have one of our, um, parent members here as well as Ms. Grebe, our chairperson. Um, I also want to thank our special education staff for the collaboration they provide, um, as a part of ACES. And also, uh, the New Hanover County Schools Administration for the specific support of special education programs. Um, first of all, the Advisory Council for Exceptional Students works very closely with our special education department as, um, being instrumental in bringing us a parent and community voice. Uh, that's been very important for us to hear the concerns of families, to hear the concerns of, um, sometimes concerns of our schools that we don't hear, um, other than through community, um, avenues and parents as well. Um, and then to also listen to, uh, some of the concerns of our students as we are, um, listening to the concerns of families and goals for the future and that, and goals for independence. Um, in addition, this gives us an avenue for discussion and clarification of questions or issues related to our service of students with disabilities. Um, and then we have an opportunity to discuss and articulate the frequently asked questions among our families. Um, many times as we are providing our special education services, we assume that many things are understood and are clear from school to school, from classroom to classroom, um, from region of our, um, of our district, uh, to region. And it's helpful for us to listen to those and to hear it from the parent perspective, hear it from the parent terminology and being able to respond and offer clarification. Um, it's exciting that many of our, um, family, um, representatives or parents on the Advisory Council are, um, involved in other organizations in the community and other support groups. And so they are able to carry out that, uh, common language and it builds that, um, that common understanding and capacity for, um, understanding our programs. Uh, one of the things that, um, we've specifically spoken about in the past year and will be a continuing discussion is understanding RTI and MTSS. Uh, responsiveness to instruction and MTSS being the multi-tiered system of support. Um, understanding that RTI is really our disability determination process and understanding that MTSS is really our school improvement framework for all students. That's been a very important, uh, clarification for our families. It's, um, also very important that we are able to, um, provide resources and, um, additional information on how to understand the nuances of both of those. Um, and we could talk for days and days and weeks and weeks and probably months and months about that, um, that difference. The other thing that, uh, I think is important to highlight about the collaboration between the Advisory Council and special education is that the Advisory Council is very involved in celebrating the achievements of the special education program. Uh, whether it's the individual student level, whether it's those, um, those individuals that make just such a big difference in our schools or classrooms or communities. Um, but also in, um, celebrating the improvements in our data within our special education program. And one of those is our continued increase in graduation rate of students with disabilities. I can't get too specific on that data, um, knowing that, you know, the data has not been completely cleared by the state board yet, but, uh, we are expecting continued, um, increase in those numbers of our students with disabilities. And that is the primary, uh, data source that the Federal Office of Special Education Programs uses to, um, gauge effectiveness of special education programs is truly that one, um, graduation rate, so.
Yeah, we can't give you the actual number, we'll just tell you it's better than last year's? Which was really good?
Right, can't give specifics, but, um, continued growth even over last year. Yes.
When will that information be out?
Usually it's the fall.
The fall?
September, October timeframe.
Okay. I'd love to share it, but I've been told I can't. But I'm excited.
Good evening, Dr. Markley and our, all our New Hanover County staff and the members of our school board, um, and parents and folks that are visiting here from the community, thank you all for this evening, for putting us on your agenda. I am Dawn Grebe and I am the Chair of the, um, Advisory Council for Exceptional Students. And I think you have the two-page summary that we submitted relative to our current year that just ended. But I do want to go over a couple of the points on that for the benefit of everyone that's here. In accordance with our governing document, we took on three major objectives, um, this past year. The first one being our, um, diversity of our members on the council. We wanted to make sure that we adhere to the one-third, um, membership being parents of students with disabilities who are served within our school district, and we have maintained that. And we've gone out of our way to try to attend approximately 30 or more different collaborative meetings within our county and the surrounding counties here in North Carolina. Networking with other agencies and other representatives to try to bring together as many of the resources that are out there for families with students that have disabilities to come together and have those dialogues to meet the needs, um, to look at ways to improve things. Um, with this, one of the collaborative opportunities, um, brought us with Cape Fear Community College. And in the process of that collaboration, we were able to have them host one of our parent forums this year. And we also acquired two board members, um, onto our council, which was a pretty good, pretty good deal for networking, I thought. Um, in addition to some of the other opportunities with networking, we also acquired two more parents, um, to join our council. So we were very pleased with that. And with this, we were also making sure that all the areas within our county are being represented by the members who are participating on the council to make sure that we are getting those voices, uh, to be able to speak up. In addition, we hope to continue to add new members who actually, um, work in the instructional and the support services of providing the services to the students and to continue to find people in industry who would be able to be partners with us, um, in this process. The second thing we wanted to try to stress was making, um, the awareness in our schools and in our community about ACES, um, more prevalent and the mission that we have. And with that, we did again have the parent forums, um, this year. And we tried to build on the success, um, of having that dialogue um, by bringing parents back again to share with us their thoughts, um, to give us, um, five broad topics and to sit down and have those facilitated discussions. We were thrilled to have the participation from our Special Education and Related Services Department and members there to sit in on the conversations and to hear from our families and to have that exchange. One of the things that came out of that was that parents wanted to hear more information about the programs that are available um, and how they go about getting, um, the services that they think that their child needs. And with that, we partnered with the Family Support Network to host quarterly workshops, basically, where parents could attend to learn a bit more about the process. This year, we had record attendance, um, in that session of having the parents come in quarterly to participate and we're hoping to continue that again with the next year. In the, um, Public Relations Department for New Hanover County, we were fortunate enough to have a video, uh, session with, um, the Public Relations Department. And we were hosted in a videotaping for the Diversity Matters Program. And we've been working also then to ensure that when we have announcements about any workshops or parent forums, that we are coordinating that effort to get the word out. Uh, along that line, we are also working, um, to establish better ties with our council of PTAs. Not wanting to recreate anything, but definitely trying to piggyback on a system that they seem to have worked out with networking with their families, where we do have schools that have PTAs, to be able to get the word out about events and activities that are happening. While we know we have about 3,200 kids that are identified and receiving services, excuse me, through the Special Education Department, we also know that there are many more families out there with kids that are struggling, that are trying to figure out their way. And it would be very important for them to have that information as well, at least to be able to start getting some answers or feeling like they can handle it a little bit better. Our third, um, objective was to make sure that we do recognize and give recognition to the people who do the things very specially for our students with disabilities and their families. Um, the staff and students within our district who do things that are outstanding, above and beyond what would be expected. We do try to recognize them, and so we do host our appreciation tea in the spring each year. Um, I think this past year, we, we realized that our space was a little bit too small, so I think we'll have to reschedule that to be in a bigger, uh, location next year, but, um, hopefully we can continue to do that. In addition, we are going to continue our efforts to advocate by meeting with as many other community agencies and attending as many programs as we can to share what we're doing here in New Hanover County and looking for ways that we can better meet the needs of the families that are served. Um, one of the, one of the, I guess the fun things is, um, is getting involved with some of the other agencies that are out here. There is the Tri-County Collaborative that's going on between Brunswick, Pender, and New Hanover. And many members from New Hanover County Schools are participating in that and several people from ACES are also participating in that. Um, in addition, we are working, like I said, with the Family Support Network with the quarterly workshops. We are also working with the ECAC organization, um, to again, reach out to parents to help them through some of the process that they have to navigate. We're working with Trillium, um, Pulse for People. And of course, I think everybody from Wilmington has, has tickled about the, the new coffee shop that we have in town at Bose and then its current expansion over, uh, New Center Drive. Um, it's those kind of opportunities and partnerships that we're hoping that we can capitalize on and bring more opportunity to our local, local town. Um, Lisa Eastep and I are both working, um, on a parent advisory council that the state superintendent has started. And, um, that will be meeting quarterly up in Raleigh. Um, right now, I guess the most recent thing that we were doing was looking at the, um, issues that we have to address with the, um, ESSA and how that's gonna be, um, formulated here in the state. So it's, it's interesting to learn about more things that are out there, um, and be able to bring that back to, to our hometown. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is just that with the council of PTAs, they were also very kind enough to tell us that, um, they had used our website information and our links from last year, um, to be able to push that out to the other PTAs. So we already know that that works and so hopefully we can build on that. Um, in conclusion here, I guess, we, we need to look at what we did learn from this year. And with that, we did go to three sites. We went to Sunset Park Elementary School, we went to Murray Middle School and Laney High School. And in all three of the visits, the thing that we came away from learning was that in each case, the school administration and the school culture had a significant impact on the service delivery that each school had for their students with disabilities. At Sunset Park, we learned that they are our first districted year-round school. So they are building on the benefits that have been seen from having the students have shorter breaks away from the academic setting, um, to be able to hold them, uh, with the skill sets that they've acquired more easily. At Murray Middle School, we learned that the, um, administration there takes into account the schedules for the students with disabilities first. And then they populate the schedule with the rest of the students from that middle school, uh, ensuring that those students with needs are being met first within, within the school setting. Laney High School, we visited, um, they have the largest population of students with disabilities. And we learned there that they also set the schedule accordingly, using the, um, resources that they have to meet the needs of the students with disabilities first. With regard to our, um, New Hanover County Special Education and Related Services Division, we have learned very clearly that regardless of, um, the service delivery that takes place at the different schools, that the department is still responsible for ascertaining that there has been full compliance with the federal and state laws. This is a tremendous responsibility and it requires that we all adhere to the responsibilities with regard to those laws since it is directly impacting our funding. We noted that with the three schools, excuse me, the three schools that we visited on their continuous improvement agenda, they have on their, um, for the schools to continue their advocacy efforts both internally and in the district. The Special Education, um, Division as well as ACES has updated their webpage and their Facebook page, realizing that social media is going to be our, our greatest, um, way to reach our stakeholders. We will be, um, continuing our work with the PTAs in our district, we will continue to reach out to them. And as far as recommendations, back to the council, or back to the school board, I'm sorry, from the council, we had suggested before a parent advocate, that we thought it would be a great position to have someone on staff that would be able to help educate parents on the different programming options that are available for their students. Someone to act like a bridge between the parents and the school staff to provide information and to maintain educational resources and to be able to share the information that is happening in the district, such as forums or other educational opportunities. Um, continuing on the, on the same thing that Julie had mentioned, we do feel that we've been hearing back a lot from parents, that there is a lot of confusion still with the MTSS and RTI and understanding what that means. So any opportunity to educate the broad population of families, to understand that MTSS applies to everyone and that it isn't until you start moving through the tiers that it begins to apply specifically to children who may be struggling. Also, we would like to have, if possible, for the ACES council to have more data, if possible, with regard to the distribution of students who are at the various schools for elementary, middle, and high school, that are students that are at risk and those that are in special education, to be able to compare that information to the total populations of those schools to make sure that we are evaluating how our resources are being used and how they are being, um, deployed to be able to help our students. One of the things that we heard back from the parents specifically, um, that I know has come up as a, as a concern is that the Alert Now system had been used to be able to make, um, messages out about our activities. And with that, we understand now that it really is something that's supposed to be used just in emergencies. If there is any way to have a workaround that would allow us still to have parents opt in to receive the messages, um, I think that that would go a long way for us to be able to reach our stakeholders. Um, the alternative is still email, and again, that though requires everyone to have some kind of computer access to be able to get that.
We are trying to make a workaround on that bone piece. For the board, there's a ruling from the federal government that I, I think it was in one year back, it's about the use of Alert Now. It's actually one of the things we're hoping that maybe the educational app will be able to take its place and use that as a, uh, as a push-out app. So it's, uh, it's gonna be a bit of a headache for, for everybody.
Well, I appreciate knowing that there's still the hope that there can be a workaround or something with that or with the app because that's, that does seem to be how most parents are able to respond or the caregivers, is through the social media. Thank you.
Uh, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you, uh, to, to Dawn and to Julie. Uh, Dawn is to be commended for the amount of work she's put in this year. She has, um, really gone above and beyond in terms of trying to get into the different organizations and groups. It's been a real pleasure working with her and, uh, kind of being dragged along to some of these organizations. Um, not dragged along, invited in, I guess I should say. I've, and I'm involved in a lot of different areas in the school system and I, I feel blessed to be, uh, involved in as many different areas as I am. For those that know me, know this is the area that's nearest and dearest to my heart. And this is one of our most vulnerable subgroups. I can't tell you, um, how important it is that we look to what these individuals are gonna be doing in their future. Because the future's been very bleak. Um, the unemployment rate for this subgroup is close to 70%. So every little gain that we can make makes a huge difference. Every gain that we can make in preschool, in first grade, in second grade, and so on, makes a huge difference. The, the things that Julie has done to increase the graduation rate, i- it's tremendous. Um, the growth that we've shown, it's, it's big. So the partnership that we're, we're, we're developing with ACES, um, and the Special Ed Department, it's, it's very important, and with Cape Fear and with UNCW and all these other organizations. Um, we have to continue to grow that. One of the, the challenges we have and we continue to have is that the service delivery, and Dawn touched on it, it does change as you go from school to school. We need to have that conversation on how to make it more consistent. It's a scary thing for children to go from one school to another and have the way you learn change when you are a special ed student. It's hard enough when you are a regular student, but when you have special needs, it can be downright terrifying. And when you're a parent and you are trying to understand the way your child learns, it's, it's very tough. So to have that consistency and to mute some of the site-based management that we have, I think would be very important for this subgroup. that we have, I think would be very important for this subgroup. So that is a conversation I would like to continue, and that is something that we've brought up for the last few years, and it's been echoed in our parent forums. And it's something that I think we need to continue to talk about, to see how we can continue to help this subgroup grow. So anyway, thank you. Do you have any questions, anyone?
You might have any questions?
I, I think I do. I was looking at some of the literature, and there were a number of, I think from the parent's side, concerns about consistency. We're, I don't know who to answer this, but is, is that a function of the parents not being fully educated, or a function of we need to do a better job in, in some of those areas?
I think from the standpoint of the parents responding to us and talking with us when they came to the parent forums and so forth, it has been that they have found that it's been inconsistent. If they talk with friends who are from another school, what's happening there and how it, services are delivered is different, and they recognize that. I think if you go out and look at any one of the elementary schools and, and look at their webpages and so forth, what one school has on there is information, is resources for parents versus another, it's all different. It's tailored to what the emphasis is at a given school. Some of your schools don't have PTAs, and so what's going to be out there is going to be very different, is information that a subset of families would get from a particular region. So, you know, it's, it's not very hard to see the differences, but when you're, when you're looking for information that you need, I think parents are finding that it is inconsistent. That's the parent perspective.
And, and I'll add to that. That's a great question. I think as, as Ms. Grebe described, you know, many parents come in with, with kind of different experiences, and they hear about different experiences. We are always able to come closer to consensus and a stronger collaboration, the more we educate parents on our services. So the contract that we have with Family Support Network for parents to come in for quarterly training, to understand the IEP, the Individualized Education Plan for Students with Disabilities, the more they understand each piece and part, and the more they understand their role as an advocate for their student, many times we come much closer to the collaboration. There are still some areas of inconsistency, and some of that is created by, you know, the unique resources every school has, or the unique focus. And sometimes it's just that student population at that particular school that drives kind of that theme and those resources. So it's, it's a little bit of both, but we, we're finding that we are drilling closer to consensus the more we provide education and awareness and advocacy.
But ACES should be, what we're trying to do is help with the education part of the parent education portion, in collaboration with some of these other groups, ECAC, Family Support Network, and then the special departments, I'll include that too.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much. Thank you very much for the report. At this time, we'll take an approximately five-minute break.